Well, good afternoon. Welcome. I think one of the only way it feels outside. Appreciate you coming out for this public hearing. We have thirty minutes from now to six o'clock. So, I'm gonna call this public hearing to order and hope you feel comfortable speaking what you would like to say during this public hearing. We are going to do a little different and drop A item there and add to number three. So, we're gonna start off with the B item, Verance's request. It was requested, rotate it a little bit. Verance's request, Buford, Ms. Sharon, would y'all like to come up and tell us why you want to do this, Verance?
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Mr. Buford, Buford Pitts, and I'm live sharing. And I knew it is, it's the first time I've ever done this, but basically, what I'd like to do is I've got a piece of property down in Gumlog, which I'm sure y'all probably got the maps or whatever, I guess. But I wanted to cut it up into three pieces. And I've had it for twenty-two years. It's rental property on one side of the other and then one side here. And the middle piece is the one I'm inquiring about now when I sell it because I'm getting older, bottom line, and I do construction, but I just can't get around as good as I used to.
Right.
And two, the money will just help me and my wife, you know, coming into retirement. And that's pretty much it, all I know. And now, all three properties has safety tanks, water meters, and has had them for many, 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 many years. Like I said, they've had it twenty-two years.
Yes.
And the other two people were rented in. The one on the left, I call it the left-hand side, is they've been there for, I think, seven years. And in the middle, they was there sixteen years, but I've not rented it. I've totally renovated it. I mean, it's ready to go. And on the right-hand side, those people have been there going on two years. In other words, I could've done renting this spot, I don't know how many times, but it's just better if I can let somebody else have it and enjoy it as much as we have.
Right. So, you want to burn it so you can sell it, sell that lot?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna sell the middle one now, and as I said in the last meeting, maybe later down the road financially, if I need to raise my money, I might sell the right one. And then, I might keep the left one for my son, but I don't know yet completely.
Right. I got you. Any questions here? Jim? No questions, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Do we have somebody here that wants to oppose this, Verance? As usual, if someone comes in between nine and six o'clock, we'll let them speak, but since we have nobody else speaking on behalf of that in favor or against, let's move to the next one here, Verance. So, Tony, I believe you've been here before. Y'all come up and let me pull the...
This is Tony and I'm Frank and Win. I'm the translator.
Okay. I see y'all have a Verance here over on Dawkins Road.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tell us, tell us why you need a Verance.
And here we got the friend from the USDA government to go stack house for, he owned a sick chicken house, the brother house there, and it needs a stack house to store the litter, the chicken litter. And he did the grading and his neighbor, Mr. Norman, is okay with that. Besides, Mr. Norman, the neighbors closer to that stack house, nobody else gonna be close to that.
So, how much of Verance here are you questioning?
We just wanted to do that.
I see you're a hundred and fifty feet here
Yes.
From the property line, right?
Yes, sir.
So, you don't miss, make the regulations?
No.
Okay.
It's just the side yard?
Side yard.
Okay, alright.
Because of the nature of the stack house, it should be, you know, close to the chicken house so we can move the litter more conveniently.
Well, I see a...
The best spot to build, yeah.
I see a good bit of territory to the right of the stack house, back down that direction. Why specifically you putting it where you putting it?
Yeah, because it's close to the first four houses downhill, and we can move the litter over there easier. When they do the checking out or the clean out, you know, they can move the litter without any problem. Here, the two houses on the hill, if we do it up there, and they gotta go uphill, go around to back and make it a very, very long way.
Gentlemen, y'all got any questions?
You said the neighbors don't object. Do we have anything in writing from the neighbors?
Uh, Mr. Norman, I think he's right here now.
Okay. Okay, you wanna come up and speak on that behalf? Come on up. So, basically, you, it's your property that they a hundred and fifty feet from?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Can I get your name? Sir? Can I get your name?
Norman Ollie.
You got anything else to say except you agree with that?
Ah, it's fine. I see no, absolutely no problem.
You don't have no problem with it set and where it's at?
Uh, that probably was previously mine anyhow.
It was what?
It was previously ours anyhow.
Oh, it was previously yours? How long did you own, how long you own that property?
How long did I own it?
Uh, where you at, living, giving permission for them to build that? How long you been on them?
I've been there early nineties.
Early nineties?
Ninety-two, yeah.
Any other questions, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir. Am I, will you leave me in for a...
No, sir. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Y'all wanna add anything to that? Any other comment?
Hmm, no, that's...
I guess the only question I have with that other territory, I think you answered that the grading wouldn't fit? Why you hadn't get...
No, the grading is fit around that area, but there's only a hundred and fifty feet to the border, so... What, what was exactly your question is?
I don't have any more questions.
So, we should go ahead.
You got anything to add to what you already said? Good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
We're fine. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so, y'all have...
Thank you.
So, we have agreed to go forward, right?
Not yet.
No, we approve at the next meeting.
We will have to approve it at the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Now, this is not a done deal because we will have our planning zoning person to come up and present each one, and then we'll listen to that. So, we'll listen to the pros and cons, and then we'll make a decision at the six o'clock meeting tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright. Thank you very much, Jim.
You're quite welcome. Thank you. Did Ms. Wendy come in?
She go out, right?
She came in? Okay, you, uh...
Thank you.
Tom, Ms. Wendy, you wanna come up?
You, sure. You can stay.
You, you're welcome to stay now.
You don't need to stay.
You might wanna stay.
Stay, okay.
Uh, because Mr. Scott, he'll be talking about your issue later.
Okay.
Yeah, please stay. Come on up to the podium, give your name, please, to the...
Hi, Wendy Hayman. I'm so sorry we're late, folks. Terribly sorry. Thank you for the vacation.
You're on time? That's good. You're good.
Thank you.
Tell us, tell us about your project over at Property Springs.
Oh, sure. Um, well, we would like to build a house, and the property was zoned agricultural, and we wanted to do the variance so we can bring the house a little closer to the lake and be able to enjoy this beautiful, you know, lake.
So, you're gonna set your house just to get a Verance house so you can get a little closer to the lake?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying?
From what I understand, the properties around us are all residential, so we can actually, so it won't hurt anybody, and there's nobody next to us that would interfere with. It would just truly be awesome for us.
Any questions? Ms. Wendy?
I'm just a little curious, this proposed pool, looks like it falls into a light space or green space?
Right, so there's, we don't have, we don't have setbacks on pools. Um, both property lines that the pool would be building up to is actually Core, you know, Core Engineer property. Core, the Core has no setbacks from the Core line, just as long as you're on your side of the property line, that don't have any other setbacks other than that. And we don't have anything that addresses setbacks on pools, so that would still meet everything.
I have no other question. Y'all got any questions?
Is Mr. Stanley good with the variance? Have you talked with him?
Oh, absolutely. The neighbor?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. He's lovely. He really is very nice, and he's very happy to have neighbors that wanna work with him.
Has he put anything in writing?
No. It's still plenty far away from his property, so it shouldn't... We talk quite often, actually.
I don't have any other question.
Anyone else, gentlemen?
So, we'll decide this issue. If there's no other questions, we'll decide this issue at six o'clock meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you for your time.
Feel free to make yourself at home.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anybody that wants to come up and object to this being constructed? Well, that was short and sweet, but if we have someone to come in before six o'clock, we'll give them opportunity to speak, okay? Where's for any of these, or where's against any of these? So, make yourself at home. We'll be taking a, I guess you could say, a recess up until about three minutes till six o'clock, okay? So, feel free to talk, but remember, we still under restrictions, so social distancing and mask and this type thing. I understand the governor's extended his orders, so that's what we try to abide by. Ladies and gentlemen, I got about two minutes until... Uh, I believe it's six o'clock. Our clock is running fast. I don't believe somebody pushed it back. On the wall, that is. So, uh, in this two minutes, anybody on the three items here that we have want to talk for, or negative against what we've been talking about for the last twenty or thirty Well, if not, we're going to, we're going to call the adjournment of the public hearing, and then we will turn right around, and we will call our regular November board meeting of the commissioners here at the Justice Center. I want to welcome you. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate you taking time and energy into taking part with the Board of Commissioners. So, we're gonna call this meeting to order, and hopefully you got a agenda back there on the table. Feel free to get you one if you didn't. If you'd like to have the agenda, you can follow right along with us. And as usual, we always start off with an invocation and a pledge, and we take it monthly apart, monthly each. And I think it rotated down to myself today, so will you please stand and let's have the invocation and pledge? Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we give you praise and thanks for this opportunity to be in this position to help make wise decisions for our county in order that we have a great future here, living upon your earth. These commissioners have a desire to make it good for our citizens. We pray that you would guide us tonight as we go into this meeting and instill us the knowledge in what are decisions that's correctly to a minister. And as we leave this separate ways, we know these important decisions being made tomorrow. We ask that you would guide each citizen in America as they go to the polls and vote, and our father may we abide by the results and come together in unity. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Love, please. Go ahead. Our pledge is to define the United States of America and to represent what is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. Uh, next is to approve the agenda. We, we hook up with the clerk and try to formulate the agenda and so forth, and it's beginning of the meeting, we started approving the agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion to accept agendas written?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Dr. Maxxer makes a motion, do we approve it? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Wells makes a second to that. End of discussion about the agenda. Hearing none, all in favor? We got a five oh vote approving the agenda. Next, we had a couple of meetings back in October the fifth. We had a public hearing and a regular board meeting, and we've been issued the minutes that was taken by a clerk in that meetings. So, it's just time we will ask for a motion to approve these two items, only minutes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve those.
Thank you. Commissioner Franklin makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Wester seconds that motion, end of discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Five oh for the approval of the minutes. Next is the public comments. Will give us opportunity, the public will come to give their opinion on anything that was associated with the county that you think is positive or negative or input that you'd like to get. It's only comments only. We don't get any question and answers at this meeting. But you're all welcome to comment this time. Do we have someone that'd like to come up to the podium, give your name to the clerk and make a public comment? Hearing none. Now, we'll, we'll move down to the items for discussions. And first thing we do is have the public hearing items, and we'll start off with A item, the Verance request that Wendy Hayes and Norman called Mr. Scott, our planning zoning person, to come up and give us some comments about that.
Appreciate it. Good evening, gentlemen. So, as you heard from Ms. Hayman, they're moving here. Um, they're moving, actually, she's actually moving up here to be the new managing partner of Longhorn and Livonia. So, she's got a lot going on right now, but she's found a lake lot up in Gumlog off of, um, where are we at? Franklin County Boat Ramp Road. And the lot, it's kind of a, if you look at the map, it's kind of a funky shaped lot, but in order to get down to the, to the waterfront to build the house, she does need a rear and side yard setback variance because currently it's zoned ag-intensive. The next property to the east, the next property's over, are residential single family, and the setbacks that she's requesting are the same setbacks of residential single family. So, we're just basically carrying those setbacks on over to one lot. The, the property to the west has got those houses that were built prior to zoning, and those, those houses are built pretty well in the same location that she's wanting to build hers. It'll be pretty well aligned. Uh, the planning commission didn't see any issues with it. It made sense why to approve the variance. It is important to note that there is a proposed second residence on the site plan, so there, it is, it is permitted to have two residents on one tract of land if it's for a first degree family member. They are wanting to, they do have future intentions. They don't know exactly when, but they, they wanna go ahead and do it now and get that, ensure that, y'all know, that there's potential for that second lot to be built with those same setbacks. So, if you look at the site plan, the setbacks encompass that whole tract of land, and that would be, that would be what y'all be approving tonight if, if you approve it. I saw no issues with it when I went out there, and the planning commission, they saw no issues with it either. So, their, the planning commission's recommendation was to approve the application.
You've had to, you've heard a recommendation from our planning zoning director. Do I have a motion with yourself?
Can I ask him a question real quick, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sure.
Are we just, are we voting on a variance, or are we going to rezone this to residential?
It's, it's a variance. It would be, it'd be a variance, a setback variance.
Yeah. Good question.
I think on the, I think on the site plan, it said rezone on the site plan, but that was from the person that did the, um, the site plan, I did.
Good question.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to accept?
I move that we accept the variance request from Ms. Hayman.
Thank you. Dr. Maxxer makes a motion, do we accept that? Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wester, second said. Any discussion, gentlemen, before we take any action? No discussion, all in favor of the Verance? We have a five oh approval of that Verance. Alright, let's move to the B section here, the Verance request here by Sharon Buford Pitts. Mr. Scott, tell us a little bit more about that.
Okay, so this is another, another tract of land in the, in the Gumlog area. Uh, Mr. Pitts is requesting a minimum lot size reduction variance and then a side yard setback variance for tract number three. So, currently, this is one 2.26 acre tract of land. You know, it was purchased, I think it was back 2099, sometime like that, prior to zoning. The houses are already on site. They've been there for the last twenty-plus years. Uh, like Mr. Pitts said, they, they're all on their own utilities. Uh, they're set up for individual lots. Property across the street, across Highway 328 is residential single family, Gumlog area. There's a lot of lots in Gumlog that are a lot smaller than what these are. So, dividing these lots up, how they, how it's proposed, would not be inconsistent with the area. Um, it is currently zoned AI, but it's another tract that borders your residential single family district. Um, I do want to, you know, make it clear that if somebody came and said, we've got 2.26 acres with nothing on it, and we want to develop it, and we want to reduce these lot sizes, it would not, you know, it'd be recommended to deny that. It's not good land development growth practices for lots of this size generally, but given its location, given its history, given that it was done prior to zoning, and our zoning ordinance is kind of written that we wanna make sure that when we impose these zoning ordinance, that we're not gonna be hurting the people that are already currently operating, which I think this setup is not gonna be hurting anything, is not gonna hurt anybody. Uh, the planning commission had no issues with it. I saw no issues with it. I went out there, did a, a site visit. The property's neat, it's orderly, it's been well maintained. Um, I think, I don't, I don't see any issues with it. It is planning commission, so, you know, they recommended to approve it, and so do I.
Any questions for Mr. Scott? Hearing no question. Do I have a motion that we accept the Verance?
Make a motion that we accept that request.
Thank you. Commissioner Wells makes that motion that we accept. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Franklin makes that second. End of discussion, gentlemen. Hearing no discussion, all in favor? Alright, we got a five oh vote, so it's approval for that. Now, we'll move to the next item here, C. Mr. Scott, tell us about this situation here, about stack house.
Yeah, this situation, we got a Mr. Tony Win. He's got a four-house poultry farm at 460 Dawkins Road. If you look at that, um, if you look at the flat slash site plan, the property, it would be actually to the south of this. He owns that as well. The, the one that's, the property line's close to the chicken houses, and there's actually two more chicken houses on, on that tract of land as well. So, he owns six. Uh, the actual parcel we're looking at is this, uh, 29.51 acre tract. So, he came in, um, I can't remember, June or July of this year, and got a building permit application for a stack house. He gave us the site plan. He staked out the stack house location, where we're gonna go. Our, our guy went out and inspected the setbacks. The setbacks met the, or the, where it was laid out, they met the setbacks at the time, which it was actually gonna be, if you're looking at, at this flat, it was gonna be east, a little bit, a little bit to the west, kind of closer to that pond, and angled a little bit to the back corner of this property. So, the pad, the pad got graded. Uh, it was graded by Kyle Starr, and I talked to Kyle Starr about this, the grader. Kyle said that when he went out there to grade it, he graded in the location that he was instructed to by Mr. Win to grade it. So, at some point between our guy going out there to inspect it and the grading work being done, the pad got moved. Uh, the, the only reason we found out about it was because the contractor that was gonna build the stack house got out on site and got to looking around and said, hold on, let's pump the brakes on this. They called me and said, I don't think this thing's gonna meet the setbacks, so I went back out there measuring it. It wasn't gonna meet the setbacks, and it wasn't in the location that it was originally approved for. So, whether it was the fault of the grading contractor, Mr. Win, um, that's, we don't know those facts, but it is not where it was approved for the building permit. Um, the, the planning commission, either way, doesn't like the fifty foot too close to the property line anyways. They, they, I think they would've recommended to deny it either way, but given the fact that it was at some point moved from the approved building location to this location. Uh, and I talked to Kyle where it was originally gonna be. They, they could grade that pad, they can make it work. It was gonna be a little bit more grading because it does have a little bit of a downhill slope, uh, but it would actually be a little bit closer to the chicken houses, which actually makes it a little bit more functional. Um, I, I think the site was changed to try to save, try to save money. That's essentially what happened. Uh, so, the planning commission's recommendation was to deny this variance. Um, the, the neighbor, Mr. Holly, he, he, you know, he did speak in favor of it. He said he didn't have an issue with it. But the planning commission does feel strongly that these setbacks on these, on these stack houses especially need to be, we, we need to keep an eye on this because an open barn full of chicken litter is something that we gotta be careful with. Um, but then, compound that with move in the site location, it was, it was a pretty, pretty easy decision for him.
So, I understand you're bringing the recommendation from planning zoning, it's to deny?
That's correct.
Any, any of your commissioners got any questions for Mr. Scott?
Now, where was the initial site?
Um, I can, I'll show you. Give you a rub, I mean, I thought you'd be giving all that information. But it was originally to be, um, based on kind of like, you know, here, you look, I love, I love, I love, I love, give or take. Closer to, closer to chicken houses and further away from this property line. So, this is, yeah, this is Dawkins Road. This is, this is the neighbor's tract of land, and then he owns it, like, I don't know, the, 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 the house and stuff stacked in my head, but this is Dawkins Road.
There was a sub in there, maybe, I don't know.
No, this, actually, this next track right here is chicken house as well. You gotta go further into Royce.
This is going toward Royce.
This is going toward Royce. Right. So, the closer you get to Royce, then there is.
Got you.
Some more.
Can you, can you show us where you're at?
Well, let's see where we at. So, it was originally gonna be give or take, kind of, you know, a little bit closer to chicken house, something like that, right there.
And the, and the reason to move it?
Uh, it's been easier, it'd be cheaper to grade it right there.
Okay.
It's a little bit flatter right there.
Any others, any other questions for, for Scott? Jim? Okay, uh, do I have a motion that we approve this variance request? Therefore, since we don't have a motion to approve it, dies. Therefore, it be denied. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Now let's move to the other items here. Always we'd like to recognize. Yeah, uh, we got people that may be zoning in on this meeting, uh, so pardon us just a minute and let's make sure that we, uh, got the people that would like to zone in and I know specifically we got our attorney that's on the zoom.
I got the volume up right now, Bubba. Can you, can you repeat one more time?
Sure. Um, my, my advice, I think it would be appropriate for there to be a motion to deny the request and a second and, and a vote on that question would be appropriate.
Alright, thank you. That's why we zoom in and make sure we get the legal advice coming from our attorney and you talking about the one that we just denied?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion we deny, gentlemen?
I'm, I move that we accept the planning and zoning's recommendation to deny the variance request.
Alright, we got a motion, Dr. Maxson, that we accept the motion by the planning zoning people to deny. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, the commissioner. Wester seconded that motion. Any discussion?
So i- if we deny this, they can, they are then free to put their stack house where it was originally approved?
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
Because they've been approved to put it in another location, so they still can go for that location, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? Here, none. All in favor? Five oh vote? Thank you. I appreciate that, uh, Bubba, for that advice there. Now, as I was saying, the next item is the December salary adjustment and this comes down to us making some, um, moves according to the protocol and how to do this in order that all of our employees, uh, in the county will enjoy a Christmas gift from the county people, uh, through the commissioners. I'm gonna call Ms. Beth, give us the protocol and tell us what, what needs to take place.
Um, like many local governments and state in our area, we try to show our employees appreciation around the holiday season. In a tradition that predates my role as county manager, uh, Franklin County has typically provided a small token of appreciation at Christmas time. That is typically a monetary, um, monetary in nature. While salaries and benefits are approximately 75% of the operating budget, this expenditure represents a fraction of a percentage of the overall budget, approximately 0.1%. Uh, the token of appreciation is provided within the limits of and through management of the operational budget that is approved each year. Um, in May, Franklin County received an unexpected workers' comp distribution in the amount of $27,590, sorry, $27,590. Uh, while there are no requirements or no limitations on this, uh, use of this funds, the workers' comp board of trustees intends for the funds to be used in a manner to reduce future workers' comp claims and losses. In the midst of the COVID situation and unknown economic outlook, these funds were deposited and not earmarked for any, uh, particular future use. There are multiple studies that show a correlation between employee morale and workers' compensation. While our usual, usual Christmas adjustment can be provided within the limits of the FY21 budget, I recommend that we utilize the unexpected distribution to increase the Christmas salary adjustment. This action would directly reward employees with funds that the county received as a result of the overall workers' comp plan performance, which can be linked to the performance by employees. I, I recommend that the board of commissioners approve a budget modification that will transfer unrestricted reserves into the operating budget in the amount of the $27,590. Uh, the allocation of this budget adjustment to the specific departments will be finalized upon the actual processing of the Christmas adjustment through payroll. Uh, while I'm in favor of processing and always have been, uh, in favor of processing an adjustment in a separate direct deposit or something tangible to ha, to give to the employees because of the, um, psychological impact and, you know, so it doesn't get lost in their normal pay. There are a few factors that have increased the complexity of the payroll schedule this year and after discussing it with our payroll, um, department, um, I think it's important that we leave the options for the Christmas salary adjustment open so that it can be processed in a manner that best fits with the payroll processing schedule and the timeframe allowed. We're going to have two payrolls that collide on the same week. Um, Ms. Deborah is going to have to, um, well, I don't think anybody ever understands what the process takes to do payroll. She hand keys every entry into the system. She manually adds up everybody's time sheets because there's always issues. Um, and so we'll have two payrolls that collide at the same time. Pay sheets are due on Christmas Eve and we'll have a payroll that processes on New Year's. So her entire holiday schedule i- is quite, um, it's just reeked with havoc. So we need to leave our options open as to when we, we would process this. But the typical Christmas, um, token of appreciation can be handled within the confines of the existing budget, but I'm asking for you to transfer reserves in the exact amount of the, uh, workers' comp fund distribution so that I will have the operating budget to make the necessary decisions, um, to process the salary adjustment.
So county manager's making a recommendation that we transfer these funds and thanks to our employees, we have earned each fund and transfer them in order that we can show them a Christmas and, and take care of our payroll clerk that, uh, fixtures out the checks and so forth. Uh, do I have a motion we accept Ms. Beth's recommendation?
I'll make that motion that we accept the recommendation.
Mr. Swells makes a motion that we accept and go forwards to, to give them, uh, the Christmas from, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wester seconded that motion. Any discussion, gentlemen? No discussion. All in favor? Seconded, faith, are you voting? Okay, we got a five oh vote to move forward with that, uh, project and we cannot say and tell our employees how much we appreciate them. These five commissioners have their eyes open and see exactly that they taking care of the county business and so forth. Now we'll move to the next item. We got a, we got a hazardous pay and employee raise. Uh, here we won't try to probably combine that. I'm gonna call Ms. Beth to, uh, talk a little bit about how we're going to combine that and talk about hazardous raises and employees' pay.
So when we were originally reviewing the criteria for the CARES Act, which is the, coronavirus relief fund that, that was given from the federal, uh, government to the state and then eventually released to the local governments, hazard pay was an acceptable use of the funds. However, the list of eligible employees was limited to certain categories and then specifically certain positions or roles within those categories. But with the limited amount of time to process and request Phase One CARES Act and the guidance provided by ACCG, Franklin County submitted reimbursement requests for salaries of the eligible positions for the allotted timeframe. So salaries that we were already having incurred, we were able to submit. Franklin County was one of the first in the state to be approved for the total amount of our allocated Phase One CARES fund. So in total, we received 873,211 and 76 cents. Uh, the majority of these funds were reported as a receivable in the prior fiscal year and therefore included in the prior year's revenue and reserve balance. Uh, that guidance was provided by the Carl Vincent Institute of Government and the State Accounting Board. Um, so, so the majority of the money i- is represented in last fiscal year's budget. Um, ACCG and GMA worked diligently to encourage the governor to release Phase Two funds. So a lot of things we were holding on, waiting to see if Phase Two was going to be released, uh, directly to the local government. Georgia opted not to pursue this path, so Franklin County has received all the CARES funds from the cor, uh, coronavirus relief fund that we're going to get, uh, in that particular category. Uh, the benefit of submitting projects which consist of salaries which are in typical expenditures is that the funds have been received and may be utilized in a wide variety of areas and not limited to the specific criteria of the CARES Act. Bridging, uh, going to the next topic, when approving the FY21 budget, the board approved a 3% pay raise with some stipulations. This increase in expenditures was budgeted through the use of operating reserves. This year's fiscal performance will determine how much will eventually be transferred from the operating reserves built over the past few years. Obviously, if we perform well, better than budgeted this year, we won't have to use as much of the reserves, uh, that was earmarked to pay for the ongoing salary increases. But during those discussions, there was a reference to additional salary increases later in the year. The economic uncertainty of this year still exists. While we have seen better performance in sales tax and TAVT, the taxes representative purchases occurring through the summer months. As you know, school was delayed in a lot of different areas, so what we just received this month, which was above normal, is still representative of those summer months when people were hanging out in Franklin County because you really couldn't do much else in, in the urban areas. In the first quarter of this fiscal year, we've seen a reduction in the year-over-year ambulance fees and crowbake fees, which are two of our typical high-performing areas against budget. So in looking at a way to bridge the gap between these two discussions, one proposal is to utilize the aforementioned funds in a way that benefits all employees, uh, that have continued to diligently provide essential services over these past several months while limiting the use of the reserve funds. So we don't want to keep dipping into reserves funds if we can find a finite, definite, concrete way, um, to take care of all of the employees. So this, we, we could accomplish this through a one-time salary adjustment, our payment in lieu of a pay raise. The calculation utilized in earlier analysis provided to the board, uh, provided for a maximum in a range of $250 to $1,000 per employee based on employment status, meaning PRN, part-time, full-time, their position and number of weeks worked. Uh, if we use this same range for full-time, part-time status for all employees, not just those limited categories which was limited by the CARES Act, the range of expenditures would be somewhere between $217,000 and $226,500. Uh, the big range in that is, is the number of part-time employees because we do have quite a bit of part-time employees that would need to be analyzed. All of our poll workers, uh, which are excluded from this, but there is a whole list of what we would normally classify as PRN as needed, but we keep them on the books in case we ever do need to pull them in. We need to make sure that we're not including those. Um, this represents approximately 25% of the total received for the CARES Act. If the board is agreeable to the use of these funds for the purpose of a salary adjustment in lieu of a pay raise, the budget modification by department will have to be finalized when the salary adjustment is calculated on an employee level. So not just those broad topics, but we have to see how it's going to calculate through payroll. Uh, and then that includes the salaries, the taxes, uh, the retirement component. Uh, this payment will need to be processed as one, a one-time payment due to the increased administrative burden on the heavily manual payroll process. Again, going back to the workload, we have one person that does payroll and our check load is now over 225, two, how, how much did, what was their last paycheck?
234.
So 234. Each person is manually entered in, their time is manually entered in. Um, but anything that's unusual or, or unique, like a payment like this, is hand keyed again. So you're talking about another 234 entries manually done. And she basically does this from a, she gets time sheets on Thursday, from Friday to Saturday, and she typically works, you know, she makes sure that everybody's payroll gets done so that the direct deposit can happen by Tuesday. It's a very limited amount of time. So constantly doing this week over week is, is really a, a burden that's too much of an administrative burden to handle, but it would calculate the entire time period and to do it as a one-time adjustment will be much better off. Uh, and then we can focus in on, you know, setting enough time and getting really prepared for that, uh, as well as handling any type of deductions that might be applicable to that, such as garnishments or, um, insurance, retirement, so on, so forth. Um, so going back to how we bridge these two topics, we've, we've talked about these at multiple different stages. Uh, hazard pay was through the CARES Act was limited to a small group, but everybody in Franklin County has worked. Um, you know, the school system is open. Um, and then we've talked about pay raise, but a pay raise would be a continual amount where we're already budgeting out of our reserves. This would bridge the gap between two, providing it for all employees and giving it a definitive amount that we know what to work towards. Uh, what the board would have to do is consider whether or not you want to move this amount of money from the reserves that was recorded in last year's revenue in accordance with the guidance, uh, to put it into the operating budget.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I might need some guidance from our attorney. Appreciate him being here, but understand the recommendation is, and we've been talking about this with most commissioners, that we want to, we want to do something for our employees as, and hazardous conditions that they've been, um, out taking care of, uh, patients if possible to head COVID and so forth. So we want to do something for all our employees because all of them is actually in the line of fire, so to speak. Now, the question I have, the recommendation that you're making is to transfer the funds so we can do it. Uh, one question comes that we, we want to do it in a monthly basis or we want to do a one-time shift and pay the employees that amount. And if I understood what you're saying, it would be the full-time employees will be up to a thousand bucks and the others, uh, part-time, that depends on the range and so forth, will be somewhere around $250.
That's based on the initial analysis that was done. Um, we did a 250 for part-time at certain categories, a thousand for full-time in those certain categories. So expanding that to a thousand full-time, 250 for part-time for all categories, um, that was the range that I gave you guys, $217,000 to $226,500. And again, the big range is due to the fact that we have on the books currently, we have 164 part-time people, of which 70 are marked as poll workers, um, another large number are PRN personnel. So they may still be on the books. We want to keep them active in case we ever need to call them in for public safety purposes, but they may not be eligible. If they have it worked in this year, we don't need to count them. So I provided a, a range to, to capture the realistic numbers.
So the paperwork from our payroll clerk, back to the question, will it be a one-time bonus payout for these individuals, those that added into the checks for the next 10 weeks?
I would calculate it as a one-time at the end and I would not do it this Christmas again. Going back to how much we're getting slammed at this last part of the holiday, I would wait until the beginning of the next year. Um, if we count 10 weeks, uh, from the first pay period in December, which will be December 4th, I think we calculated the last pay period will be February 10th, February 10th, February 9th, which would be paid in a February 26 paycheck. Because again, what I would recommend is anybody that's working in that period, let's make sure they're still working. You know, if anybody terminates in that time period, we don't need to, to calculate their, their rates. Um, but that would be the timeframe that we're looking at. And I think that's reasonable. That gets us through the WQ period. It gets us through the ACA reporting period. Cause there is a lot of reporting that has to be done from the last payroll in December, uh, to make sure. And we do that all in-house now. We do all our WQs in-house, our, um, ACA reporting. My insurance company takes care of the 1095, but everything else we do in-house.
So we'd be voting open, giving the authority to the administration to move forward with the amount of money you talked about transferring to take care of what we call hazardous pay for our employees or?
It would be a, a payment in lieu of a pay raise.
Okay, payment in lieu of pay raise. Okay. Do I have a motion we do this, gentlemen?
I'm, I move that we move that amount of money from reserves, uh, to cover that payment and that it be provided in the February timeframe that the county manager, uh, indicated where the full-time employees would receive $1,000 and the eligible part-time employees would receive 250, depending on the time that they work.
Okay. So we have a motion, Dr. Maxson, that we accept that proposal. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin seconded that motion. Any discussion, gentlemen? Here, none. All in favor? We got a five oh vote to move forward with that. We appreciate the hard work that's been done and we appreciate the employees and I know they will appreciate, uh, the commissioners, uh, trying to assist during this, uh, they will appreciate the commissioners trying to assist during this situation of the pandemic that we have. The next up is the update on the request for proposed county attorney, and I'm going to call on our clerk. Understand that we do have some people that has, and we do have an update there, and we might want to set a committee to look into this. Ms. Bell, tell us what you got.
Yes, our responses to our request for proposals for attorney services was on October 30th. We did have four responses from Dale R. Samuels, Bubba Douglas Kidd, Holsey Oliver, and Mayor, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, I apologize if I butchered it, and Gerardine Davis. What we need to do now is we have set aside November 2nd through the 13th to evaluate responses and then selections for oral presentations or interviews to be given out on November 16th and then assign those. So we need to, we talked about our original subcommittee to review and evaluate these responses. We've provided the guide by which we will evaluate them. I would recommend that we have at least two commissioners, the manager, the clerk, given the close relationship on the Open Records Act, she's constantly getting those in and has to deal with the attorney to make sure that we're following the proper protocol. I always appreciate the guidance and the wisdom of John Phillips, our county engineer. He does not know that I would recommend him to be on this subcommittee, but I'll be honest with you, when I first did this five years ago, there was, I made a mistake because I was, I was new into it, I didn't understand how it worked, I didn't, I will just say, if it weren't for him and his guidance and his expertise and relying on that experience, we might be in a different situation, which, which would have been bad for the county. So I think having somebody with experience. The other option is to add an elected official. Please keep in mind, due to the sheriff's current situation, ECU will be outgoing, we are in the tax commissioner's busiest season, so as you decide who you want to invite on that group, please keep those factors in mind, and also that the, yeah. So that may end up with an even number, so y'all might want to evaluate that, but that is ultimately up to the board. If we can get somebody nailed down, let's get the subcommittee nailed down tonight, then we'll reach out to all these folks so we can set a meeting time of this week and be able to cover these responses.
The recommendation is three, as Thomas recommended there from the office, John Phillips herself and the clerk. Now, commissioners, which two of you would like to take the role and the time to evaluate these four? Well, we can put two commissioners, since I'll be exiting December 31st, I'm going to excuse myself, and, and do we have volunteers?
I volunteer.
Thank you. Commissioner Swales, volunteers? Do we have another volunteer? Dr. Maxon, volunteers?
You said there was a date that you had in mind.
I don't have a date this week. I just need, to evaluate responses, we have November 2nd through the 13th to evaluate and then make selections on the 16th if we want to bring them in for interviews. So we have a broad range. Once we have a subcommittee, what we will do is probably make copies. Each person responding was supposed to provide so many copies, so we'll be able to compile those copies of the response and everybody can review independently, but then schedule a meeting for discussion.
I would, I would like for John Phillips to be on that committee.
Yeah, with John Phillips and these two and you two. And I would recommend for the elected official, since looking at the situation of all of them, the sheriff being sick, another one going out, must have borrowed in tax season right now. I'd say Judge Ken Everson might work good, and he could give us some expertise and work with the attorney that is chosen. Any objection to that?
Let's have him, and then we can still ask Bobby, too, if he doesn't, maybe at least one of them can, if, because I'm sure the probate judge is pretty busy, too.
Yeah, it's true. It's true. Mr. Everson, let's see what's his situation, and that would give us six folks, and that would definitely give us elected official there of what situation to evaluate the attorney. Any other items we need to take care of about that? Do we need to approve the committee?
I would approve a committee and for the duration, explaining what the committee's for and the duration. So the subcommittee will consist of Commissioner Ryan Swales, Commissioner Jason Macklemson, John Phillips, Beth Thomas, Kayla Finger, and then we will ask Judge Everson and Bobby Martin to be on the subcommittee. The subcommittee will be together through the duration of the selection of the county attorney, the contract for the board to final, I'll try that again, the date of the final approval and entering into a contract for the attorney services will be January 4th, 20th of 21. The subcommittee will start from today and go through at least January 4th of 2021.
Sounds good. Now, have a motion, we accept that?
I'll make a motion that we accept that.
Thank you. Commissioner Wester makes that motion, second?
I second.
Thank you. Commissioner Franklin, second to that motion. Any other discussion, gentlemen? Here and none, all in favor? Thank you. We got a five-vote vote to move forward with that.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I did have a question before we proceed to the next point.
Okay, go ahead.
Regarding the December salary adjustment that we just proposed, I should have asked this, and I apologize for not, but I'm hoping we're not included in that, are we, as elected officials in a part-time position?
Typically, it's been anybody that is a full-time status or permanent part-time, and when I define permanent part-time, that means nobody that's PRN, that have a routine schedule, they work on a set schedule every week. In the past, all elected officials fall into that category. So if you would like specific exclusions or to exclude yourself, just let us know and we will back out from it. If you want to exclude all, if your directive is to exclude all elected officials, just let me know that, and I will draft a memo in that way. That will include the other elected officials as well that have typically received this Christmas adjustment.
Okay. Speaking for myself, I would like to be excluded. I guess we can have a conversation about that.
That's the same thing, I don't want to be excluded.
Likewise, I won't be, L's for fourth, so we'll let the commissioner speak.
I might be excluded from it also.
Mr. Franklin? Okay. So looks like commissioners, it's four, it's the hazardous, so at one time?
We will honor your wishes.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester, for that. Okay, next we'll move to the, Ms. Bell, tell us a little bit about the mapping of the county.
Yes, thank you. Over the past several years, we have expressed our interest to do what we did before, and that is group in collectively with the Georgia Mountain Regional Commission area to do a flyover. I didn't want to list it as a flyover on the agenda, so this digital ortho photography is where they will fly a plane over during the winter months and capture all the images. Franklin County's portion of this project will cover 306 square miles. The cost, which we knew would be quite expensive, has been included in the budget over several years, because you don't get this type of work done every year. But we had contracted services or professional services within the tax assessor's budgets for quite a few years, so anything that we underspent in those years went to reserve. So now it's sitting there ready for this project to occur. Franklin County's total project cost for this will be $24,144. What I would ask for from the commission tonight, and we've already expressed our intent to move forward with this project based on directives where we've had it in the budget, and we've been working on this for several years now. Tonight, I'm asking that the Board of Commissioners approve the digital ortho photography project in partnership with GMRC to conduct this, and then I will draft the budget modification associated with that motion when I get the final calculations. This is just the estimate, we should have the final contract price, and when we have that, we'll do the budget modification. To sum it all up, we want to do a flyover. It's very important. I don't think there's a day that goes by that we are not in queue public at least 25% of the day, if not more. And so I'm asking tonight for approval from the board to continue on with this project.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation from our county manager, have a motion to move forward with that project?
Make a motion that we proceed with this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Swales, make a motion that we proceed with that project. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester. Makes a second on that. Any discussion, gentlemen? When will that take place?
They, the flight will occur during the prime leaf off, I've never heard it called that, but the prime leaf off season from December 2020 through February 2021. The final product to be delivered back to us will be September 30th of 2021.
That's good. Any other questions?
And just for your information, the last time we did this flyover, I think, was dated in 14. So the images that you pull up, so now we've gotten to the point where ours is outdated enough that we pull Google Earth up side by side.
Well, another statement is, it really assists our assessment office, really big time, because it's a little bit easier to see things from the air than it is driving the roads. Any other question, statement? All in favor, six, five, eight, voting sign? We have a five-vote vote to move forward with that agenda there. Thank you very much. Now, the next thing on here is the airport authority audit update, and I asked for that put on there, because Commissioner Swales mentioned about the audit of the airport, and we've been looking into it, and I've been corresponding with our representative, Mr. Allen Powell. So Mr. Allen Powell got some communication back from a young lady called Cortina Turner, and she is actually the Deputy State Auditor. And she listed in the report basically how they go about auditing, and, and she says that while we have the expertise to perform the audit, we currently do not have the funding. So when I heard that, I asked her, did she know some other direction that we could talk or try to get some funding, and she did release some additional information of surrenders and also to maybe another place that we could get some funding. So that's the update on that. I guess tonight we need to decide, since we struck out on getting the state to do the audit report, I'm still communicating with Mr. Powell to try to see what needs to be done. Have anybody else had any correspondence on that? Have you had any correspondence?
I have not, I have not had the time in a way to give him a call.
So, so basically, I think the decision would be, I recommend we go ahead and pursue it, but contact Hart County and see if they still in favor of partnerships, like it was mentioned earlier, and I did have the chairman down there said they was interested. So I guess what we need to do, we need to pursue it, and after we get some figures before we get on to take it, actually.
Ms. Turner, give you any idea of what the cost is?
I don't think we have any idea of those. Mrs. Turner did not give us any idea, because she didn't know the exact nature of the airport and this type of thing, so she didn't have any idea what to.
I think it would be good to have some correspondence with Hart County's Board of Commissioners and let us get their feedback and see which way would be the best viable option for both counties to move forward with it.
Okay, suggestion made. Why don't we have a motion to second, move forward and contact, and I'll contact the chairman at Hart County and tell them what we had, just move forward to try to find a current auditor and how much it's going to cost, and then come back to the two counties and work out the details at that time. Do I have a motion we do that?
I'll make a motion that we, we get with Hart County's Board of Commissioners to find a viable option to discuss and to look at and to bring back to the board to be voted on.
Thank you. Second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Maxon. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, we've got a five-vote to move forward on that. Market modification update, Ms. Bell?
I wish I had some good news to tell y'all, I really, really do. The last thing that we did was the FCC market modification, and just to refresh everybody's memory, over the past five years, we have been fighting for this. We received from the FCC the final approval to be for our demographic market area to change and for us to be included in the Atlanta stations. From that point, the FCC's out, and it's for the satellite companies and the broadcasters to negotiate the terms of carriage. Please keep in mind that before 2014, no local government had the ability to even be involved in this process. So 2015, the Stellar Reauthorization Act allowed local governments. That act actually has to be renewed every five years. So while everything else was going on in 2019, the laws that govern, or the regulations that govern satellite carriage did not necessarily get renewed in 2019. And I've yet to figure out what that means. We've already received our market modification, but the rules that tell those broadcasters and the satellite companies how to interact with each other has changed, and it has been shifted into the favor of broadcasters versus the satellite. That hurts everybody in rural America. I wish I could tell you more about what that means, and I just don't know, I've tried to read as much summary as I can. I've sent letters to both the satellite companies and the four broadcasters and received no response. I reached out to the investigative reporters for, for at least one of the networks who was recently in our area, and I even expressed to them, hey, loved your report, could only see it online, because while you were 20 minutes away, we couldn't see the coverage there. The only response I got back is, as I've told you before, Beth, I'll be happy to send it to the general manager, as I send it to the general manager, and I hear nothing. At this point, I don't really, you know, I know our citizens are frustrated. We said, hey, we won, and nobody has relief. Nobody's been able to switch their satellite company, and I don't know where to turn to from here. I spoke to Chairman Bridges, and I thought my next turn would be to write a letter to the governor. Not that the governor can impose himself in these negotiations, but we can ask, if the majority of work for all politicians is casework, is working on the behalf of their constituents, then maybe we can beg him to work on our behalf and intercede with those broadcasters that he gives press conferences to all the time. If the board is agreeable to that, I'll move forward with that letter. Outside of that, I'll be honest with you, I'm frustrated and I don't have the answer for where we go from here.
Is there any way we can create some sort of a petition, make sure the press wouldn't mind sharing with the community the situation that we're facing, allow the community to sign a petition that goes to the governor as a probably more accurate representation of what our community's wishes are, along with the steps that we've already gone through?
If you would like us to do that, the last time I did a massive survey like that, I did pay for a subscription to Survey Monkey, because I brought, we reached out to the other four counties. I'll be happy to look at that subscription again, and I'll talk with the other, our three sister counties, their administration, and make sure that they would be agreeable to that, but maybe that's a great idea. I still have the survey results from the first time we've done it, but maybe we'll get better responses.
It's funny, when you're dealing with politicians, you know, they know the voters are the ones making these decisions, and ultimately, this is something that is important to their constituents.
I would think an election year so big, we'd have more push.
Yeah.
Well, actually, this is a project, this is committed, commission has been working on now for six years, and one of the most disappointing projects that we hadn't been able to achieve due to one setback or another. We do have to owe a lot of credit to Doug Collins for. We do have to owe a lot of credit to Doug Collins for getting it started in, in Washington DC. And therefore got us opportunity to take our case to the FCC, which we did. We even met with the chairperson of the FCC in Delano ago on one occasion and tried to put pressure on him. And finally, he stepped up and put it out to the board that controls that. And finally, we won the situation. And it was appealed from the South Carolina station. So the appeal was turned down. They refused the South Carolina appeal. If I understand correctly, they gave us, uh, they gave the two satellites and a lot of people, broadcasters, to ninety days to negotiate. Since then, I've been trying to talk to both parties of that and not getting very far. But likewise, talking to the state senator, uh, Mr. Purdue representatives, uh, Kellit Lofter's representatives, Doug Collins representatives. And, and actually they in limbo right now during the election, so to speak. But after the election's over, I would suggest, uh, like Mr. Swales here, we need to scream and holler loud enough in Franklin County, Hart County and Stevens County that when the storm's coming out of the west, it's done hit us folks if we're getting green for stations. If a sport is taking place in Georgia, the general station is covering the sports in South Carolina. And then like this election, we don't hear nothing about how to pick a politician that's putting out broadcasters because they not broadcasting out of the Carolina stations. Our citizen can't get to the line of station. So this is one of the, uh, good trademarks of federal government, way I put it. Uh, and I think we're going to have to keep pursuing it. And as I go off the board, you better believe this is going to be a fight that I'll take with me to try to keep pursuing it and you guys keep helping like you've done in the past. And hopefully we can break the shell and break through by putting the pressure like you was talking about. It's out of the hands of FCC now. And that, that's the one I was worried about. I wasn't worried about this other step because I thought they were mandated to come to negotiations and give us the challenge. But apparently nobody's overseeing this thing.
One of the greatest tragedies is that there's an entire generation of young people who have been influenced by the media to like Clemson football. And it's unacceptable. This is Georgia Bulldog country.
Just put it all down the road. All right. Any other, any other discussion about that?
Well, I think one of the biggest issues we faced this year has been with the coronavirus. And the only updates that Franklin, Hart, Stevens and Albert County could get had to come in the form of either through the internet, social media or whatever, from our own government.
Right.
We could not get direct information from our news stations from our own government.
That's right.
And so how, how, you know, how are we supposed to notify those that aren't on social media, that don't get on the internet to get that information? I think that's a huge issue.
That's a key issue and that's, that's heartbreaking. Uh, all the, all the things that we have been doing there because we cannot, uh, get the federal government active enough. I think officially it will happen. We, we've been fighting this war now for, this battle for six years and it might take another year or two, but we're, we're winning. Any other statements? All right. Preparations are with down, the preparations in for the jury trial?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to introduce this item. There's nothing to vote on tonight, but wanted to give you a heads up for what's taking place. Um, we are holding grand jury, um, two weeks of grand jury at the old elementary school. And there was a lot of changeover to take it from an early election site to the, to the courtroom. And we're going to see how that goes the next two weeks. Anticipating that we will still be under the same restrictions that we will be when jury trials start in February, we are slated to use the old elementary school for the entire month of February. I have to say publicly that the school board or the school superintendent, assistant superintendent, the IT department, they've been wonderful to work with. Everybody has really chipped in during this process to find agreeable solutions on how to make it work. And I can't speak highly enough for that teamwork and, and that effort amongst everybody. There are certain things that will take, have to take place for a jury trial to take place at a location other than the standard courthouse. Judge Malcolm will be preparing a resolution for the Board of Commissioners. It's my understanding that this resolution will basically deem that location as a courthouse annex so that court can happen there. But court can only take place in a location that is owned by or leased by the county government. So the school system and I are working together to come up with a reasonable lease so that we can lease the square footage that we're currently using, um, in order to meet those requirements. So that will all have to take place before February. So I wanted to introduce the item in case things got crazy and, and we had to rush and get those approved. I didn't want it to come as a shock to you. I will let you know that the endeavor to have grand jury there and jury trials is an expensive endeavor. We have spent a lot in COVID, um, preparations, uh, purchasing a sanitation machine, all of the protective equipment to handle that influx of people. But beyond that, the salaries that are going to have to be incurred for additional personnel to maintain that location, maintain the regular courthouse and maintain here in this courtroom as well. Uh, so we will see that over the next year. Uh, we are tracking those expenditures the best way that we can so we know that we still have the seventy-five percent of this CARES money out there. Those expenditures are something that we're going to have to do. That's what the judicial order says. There's an entire guide that we must follow. I'll be honest with you, I don't know how long some of these things are going to be sustainable for. So let's pray that there's some kind of relief or some kind of end game, an end product that we get to that we can feel safe and secure, um, in our own courtroom. So again, just introducing that, if y'all have any questions about how that week goes. Everybody's taken part in preparing for that. So everybody needs to be commended for the clerk of court, office, office. Even the trustees and the inmates have been, it's been, uh, it's been a rough go. But if you have any questions, just let me know.
Any question for Ms. Beth on that? All right. Sounds good. Wonder why somebody from New York would be trying to call? Of all times, and I put it on silent, I don't know how it wrong. Y'all excuse me. All right, uh, let's move to the announcement then, Ms. Beth.
Yes, sir. I'm getting tired of my own voice. I know everybody in this room and we have to listen to it even, it's pretty rough. Uh, I do want to say thank you to all the election poll workers as they completed three weeks of early voting with record breaking turnout and the work that they will put in tomorrow. So I don't know if any of you guys went and early voted, but it was a pretty seamless process. But I went on the last day of early voting, dressed up in my Halloween costume where nobody recognized me, which was quite fun. But, um, uh, you know, they did a fantastic job. So we want to say thank you for them. But I also want to say a specific thank you to our maintenance director who rarely ever gets any shout-outs. Because usually when you're calling him, it's because you have a problem and you're panicked and then you forget to say thank you. But Jason Ellis, for all the behind the scenes work that he's done. He had to set up transport all of the election machines and we had to flip, and I shouldn't say we, they flipped over, uh, the old elementary school from a voting location to a courthouse in a weekend. And he was a big part of that, making sure that after putting in a hundred hours for that pay period, he still got called in yesterday when I called him to, to spray down the, uh, the room. And so he came in, so I wanted to say thank you specifically to him. Our code red, want to remind everybody, if you haven't already signed up for that emergency notification system, you can text ALERTFRANKLIN to nine nine four one one. The link is on our Facebook page. Thanks to Ms. Kayla. We will get it eventually on our website. Please keep in mind that Gina, who has been, you know, going, I mean, it's election time and we know that she is our website administrator and we are trying to let her focus on her primary job, which is elections in this important time period. And I will say thank you to payroll. Uh, it seems like I picked on Ms. Deborah a lot today because we were talking about the payroll process. But again, until you watch what she does in a short amount of time, I don't think that anybody can truly appreciate it. And so for everybody that gets a direct deposit three days early, because that's what everybody's accustomed to and to know, and it's more than pushing a button, I want to thank her for all the work that she does continuously and then even meeting these other demands on top of that. Thank you, Ms. Deborah, for making sure that all of our employees get paid on a timely manner. And that is it, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, let's start down there, Ms. Weston.
Uh, I got a couple. We need to remember our sheriff, Steve Thomas in prayer, uh, with him having battle virus and double pneumonia. So, uh, I think as a county, we need to remember him and, and pray for him, for him. Huge thank you to the road department, maintenance department, water department, fire departments and everybody that was out cutting trees and, and getting roads clear, uh, after, I guess you would consider it a tropical storm come through, which go figure in twenty twenty that we would get hit with a tropical storm in northeast Georgia.
Right.
But a huge thank you to them for all of their hard work and, and keeping roads clear.
Fantastic. Mr. Weston?
Uh, just, uh, I want to commend everyone here on the board for, uh, recognizing the need to extend hazard pay to all the county employees. We do value every single one of you all. This has been a weird year, very weird, very, very challenging. And I, I think we've all been tested a lot. And so hopefully, uh, this is just kind of a small gesture of our thanks and maybe gives, um, something positive to look forward to for some of our employees this year.
Thank you. Commissioner Franklin? You got it?
I just echo what, what Weston said.
Right. Echo what, uh, Commissioner Weston said. Dr. Marks, can you?
I'll say the same thing. We, uh, we have, we faced the flare-up of this COVID nineteen in the summer. It looks like we're on the verge of another one and it has affected, uh, lots of different areas of county workers, employees, but especially over in the jail. Uh, they've had numerous employees become sick with it. They also have, have prisoners who are sick. And now the sheriff is in the hospital, so we want to remember him and.
So we got a lot going on and.
And also thanks to the, the county employees who helped clear up the roads during the storms.
Right. We, we're getting a whammy after a whammy, but, uh, Franklin County stands strong due to the citizens, the type of citizens we have in here in the county and the commissioners that willing to take avenues. And I want to thank our clerk, Ms. Kayla. You do a good job transferring information to us, like the ACCG that's having, uh, the two, two kids sending out to everybody. And it gives a lot of valuable information, the projects that ACCG is, uh, uh, proactive. And also we got the district meeting coming up in November. So I encourage the commissioners that's going to be here, the, in order that they could hook up with ACCG uh, and help battle for the county because, you know, numbers is better than small numbers. Uh, so appreciate that, Ms. Kayla, for you getting that information out to us. Uh, I have nothing else. Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second? Mr. Swale? All in favor? We stand adjourned.
Thank you, gentlemen.